Okay, it's 4:32. I was hoping that another, I thought more constituents wanted to come on today, but just in, in, just to honor everybody's time, we can start, we're gonna call the meeting to order of Maintenance and Development Committee. Today, we're here to talk about the bike park. And I have Laura's here from the Parks Department, I imagine. Do you have any updates or any comments? And I know that we have constituents, Ms. Betsy Johnson, she's from the, what is the name of your committee, Ms. Betsy?
Walkbike Springfield. And I have, I hope this iPhone coming on is Yolanda Cancel, who's really been the real driver. Oh, no, it's Jessie. I did let Yolanda know.
Okay, good.
That she was gonna try to join as well.
Okay, great.
The two of us are who did also attend the Lower Liberty Heights Council Meeting. Was, I think that was last week.
Okay, okay. So do you want, so Betsy, do you wanna go first and talk about what you guys have done so far? And then we can let the Parks Department?
Well, this whole effort goes back, now we're talking, it's, time flies, cuz it was pre-pandemic. Oh, here's Yolanda. I maybe should let her fill us in. You know, and it was a lot of, there was a lot of, starting to be a lot of pushback from youth who were using the streets to do things that they would do in a bike park. And, and the other real push behind this was Alex Weck, who, you know, started Rad Springfield. This was before he moved back to Minnesota. And so we put in for a Community Preservation Act proposal to be able to hire a consultant to both do, evaluate a number of sites around the city for appropriateness for a bike and skate park. Because that has also been one of the constituencies that we've, you know, paired up with on this. And, but also to do the initial, you know, part of the site evaluation is put together, is to hire a consultant who had the ability to really come up with a design that could meet both the needs of the various kinds of bicycling community. I became knowledgeable about what a pump park is versus a trick park, et cetera. And then at the community meeting that was held during COVID, a little bit during COVID times, I sat, I think both Yolanda and I sat there being overwhelmed with the, with the skateboard lingo. And, but interesting enough, the level of really having come to realize the, the number of people who were there, who you didn't, would not call youth, into their twenties, thirties, who have been at this effort for twenty-plus years in Springfield. So, but this is also what led to really having the mayor actually end up getting behind this, realizing the, and the Parks Department to, and really getting behind this Community Preservation Act, that this was a recreational facility, that Springfield was behind the times and not moving forward. So, we were able, the, I, I should say, we, the Parks Department was really able to hire really the foremost designer of this kind of facility in the country. And so things were, so then the negotiate, it really came down to the, the premier, the prime, prime site we were focusing on for this, first of what we look to have be multiple-like facilities in the city, be at land that the city actually owns, but was, I guess it was a lease or a loan. I tech, you know, or dedicated use to the Boys and Girls Club on Karoo Street. And so there were all kinds of negotiations and discussions with them. Initially, they were resistant, but then they got behind it. And now Pat, Pat's just coming on. He should better, be the one better talking about, he was the one in the front line, talking with the Boys and Girls Club.
We can take over from here, Betsy.
Okay, you take over, because now we're at the point.
I was just waiting for you to take a breath.
Now, you're at the point of you're submitting the grant to the Land and Water Conservation Fund.
Yeah.
Right, and get the right timing on that now.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Betsy. Go ahead, Laura.
No, no, just Pat, just so you know, Betsy was just giving an overview of how Betsy and Yolanda helped with the CPA portion of the, the grant to get the feasibility study started and just that kind of background. And so we were just in, into that portion. So you've, you've arrived just in time. But Betsy and Yolanda did a great job. Pat, you're still on mute. I think you're trying to say something.
No, just thank you, and I'm sorry I'm late for the meeting.
That's okay. Thank you for being here, Pat.
Yeah, great. So as Pat, Betsy alluded to, we, we did, we did, the city did receive the grant, the CPA grant, to do the feasibility study, to look at locations for a bike and skate park. And we worked on this over the last year, to have two years almost. And we had a specific site in mind, and we developed plans for that and applied for a grant through the Land and Water Conservation Grant for the, the initial site at Karoo Street. But since the time of applying for the grant, and now, that site is no longer available. So we've had to shift gears a little bit and go to another site that we had been looking at through the course of the feasibility study, which is Gordon Bill Park. And it's good timing now, because the Land and Water Grant is, was just announced in the last week or two. It's due in January, so we will be applying again for the, the bike and skate park and updating kind of what that's gonna look like for the neighborhood and new plans and things of that nature. And should we be successful, the project would start construction most likely in 2024, just based on the timeline of how Land and Water Grants work. We would be awarded the grant around this time in 2023, 24, and it would have to be completed by December 31st of 2025. So that's kind of the timeline we're looking at. I do, and I, if possible, Zeta, if I could share my screen, I can show you guys the, the plan that we're working towards.
Sure, please. Do you have the ability to do that?
Yep, let me try it, and I will. And Pat, if I miss anything, please, um, jump in. Okay. Are you able to see the plan?
Not yet.
It's coming up.
There it is.
Yes, now, yes.
So this is, again, this is a conceptual, oops, just went away, hold on. Okay, give me one moment. I don't know where it went. Sorry.
My dog is so excited to see that swim.
Oh.
Okay. Sorry about that. I don't know why it stopped.
I know, I just thought it just went away.
Let me see if I can find it again.
So while she's finding it, so Zeta, Betsy and Yolanda and I met with the Neighbor Council, I think it was just last week, actually, last Tuesday. We met with the Subcommittee, we, of that Neighbor Council, Lower Liberty Heights, the week before that. And they are in full support and favor of the site for the skate park. And what we hope to do, either in January or February, I've got a, actually Laura and I are discussing the timeline tomorrow. We want to get PILLAR and GZA to meet with the community, go over this concept plan that we've taken for Gordonville Park and work with the neighborhood. And the, the kids that will be using the park, or anyone that's going to be using the park, and get their input for this site as well. And I think it'll be a faster process, cuz they've taken that information and included what we went through for the Boys and Girls Club site and included it for the site.
Excellent.
We'll be happy to share that meeting date once we get it. So I'll let Laura walk you through the schematic for this.
Okay. So hopefully you're seeing it now. If you're not familiar with Gordonville Park, this is right at the top of Liberty Street, where Liberty and Armory and Genesee Street meet. And then down on the other end is the Puerto Rican Bakery there, and then the, the Restore.
The Restore.
Yep, the Restore on Warwick Street. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just to orient yourself. So right up at the top here is like 291. That, and that exit for Armory Street, so.
Right.
Gordonville is about a 6.6 acre park. And what we'd be looking to do here is, in addition to the skate park and the bike park elements, we're adding in a splash pad for the neighborhood and a playground, as well as developing an arboretum system in here, just to kind of keep the, the urban forest feel, but in a, in a way that people can access it and just kind of learn about maybe why this parcel of land has been a park for so long in the city's history. So this is named after Nathan Bell's father. It was donated by the Bell family. And it's really a unique spot that you can, you can actually see downtown Springfield from up here at the top of the park. So when you're walking in, you get a really cool view of the city. So I can see a lot of people wanting to come and, and use the bike park. Just, it's, you know, a great feature. What we're planning to do in this phase, the Land and Water Grant is a 50-50 grant, which means whatever your project budget is, the Land and Water Conservation Fund would pay a portion of that, and the city would pay a portion of that. And it's a reimbursable grant of up to $1 million, so you can have a $2 million project. And that is what the budget that we're aiming for in this phase. And that would include the, the new entrances from Liberty and Genesee Street down here at Armory and Warwick, and the walking paths through the, excuse me, the paths, which can be used for the bike, for bikes, as well as that kind of pump track type feature, but also as circulation through the park. And then you have a splash pad, a playground for the five-to-12-year-old range. And then this is a smaller playground for the two-to-five-year-old ages and other elements. We can, we can look in there. Again, this is conceptual, and we haven't gotten into the full which elements are gonna be where, and that's where we would be looking for neighborhood impact, input.
Yeah, I mean, the neighborhood, the, the, some of the comments the other night were that these, like, the playground areas should actually be further from where the bikes and skateboards are, just.
Yep. And I, I did speak with.
People could see kids, little kids getting run over.
Yeah, I did speak to GZA about that point. And again, this is what we wanna do on this schematic is, and what we would use this for the, for the grant application, is show the things that we know are possible within the park. And then we can get into the more design development of where it goes. Once we're, once we get, you know, more feedback, and then also when you get awarded the grant, that's when you really dive into some of that design development. Cuz the grant pays for the construction documents, as well as the construction, so.
The other main comment. I'm sorry, can we have one person speaking at a time, please? Thank you. Raise your hand if you have any questions, and we'll get to those, please. Thank you.
No, there's no question. I'll say in the parking.
But still, we, we don't wanna interrupt people.
Okay, so to Yolanda and, and Betsy's points, I know you've given feedback already on, on this plan. Some of those things, we are, you know, we're working on as we're developing the grant application. And we, you know, some of those things may change on the plan. But due to the tight timeline of the turnaround of the grant application, we wanna show them what we think is possible. It doesn't mean it's necessarily the exact location it's going to go.
Right, so go ahead, Yolanda. I'm sorry, Laura, are you done? Go ahead, Yolanda.
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, Laura was right about, cuz we had brought up the fact, or George had brought up the fact of the parking, which he made a really good idea, what he made, because the Parker Bakery is, the Puerto Rican Bakery already has problem with parking. So if the parking is over there, it's gonna be utilized by the Puerto Rican Bakery. So by putting the parking lot completely on the other side, would actually make it a lot better for the parking to be used by the bike park and not flooded by the Puerto Rican Bakery.
Right. But I think what Laura is saying is, this is kind of just like a schematic to present to the grant.
Right, 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 right. I understood that.
The details will, I'm sure the details will change. Um, this is really, this is really amazing. I'm really excited about it. Laura, will you guys be able to apply for any CPA funds for this?
Well, I think we, that's something to consider as well. In the original, our original application last year, I think the funding had been City and CDGB at that point. I think the timeline of CPA doesn't always match up with these grants. But it's definitely something to consider. I wanna, I do wanna point out, though, that the, the sidewalks and the actual construction of the, the parking lot, right now are not within that $2 million budget. The $2 million budget is the interior of the park. So the walkways, the, the, the bike and skate park portion here, which those, sometimes you'll hear it called a bike park, sometimes a skate park. In the industry, they're kind of, it's kind of interchangeable. And the, the designer that we're working with, Brad Sedeki from PILLAR Design, he is, designs bike and skate parks across the nation. He's a very well-known designer in this field, and we're very excited to be working with him. And those two communities kind of work together, and the features are used interchangeably by both, anyone with wheels. So, you know, you could be on rollerblades, or, you know, using a wheelchair, or using a skateboard, a bike. It's really a, a place for, for people to recreate in all different types of ways. So it's very exciting. I think it's great that we're able to, to move forward.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Betsy. You're muted, ma'am.
Unmute. One of the things we've talked about is going in for another CPA grant so that the city can continue to retain PILLAR to continue to begin to develop the strategy, overall strategy for where else, they've done some preliminary looking at other sites. And so that we, while this project is moving ahead, we're not then creating another two, three-year lag before a, there's a facility at an Indian Orchard, you know, you know, is the Chick, Chickafue Outlook or Leek Park a possible place?
So what you're saying is.
Where else in the city, or is it Greenleaf, you know? So that we begin to really move that strategy along, as well as maybe get some of this additional funding that's needed for some of these other elements in this park as well. So, yeah, we're, I mean, those proposals usually are, are also gonna be due, well, they're usually due in March, April, so we have a little bit more time to continue to look at what would be in that, that proposal as well. Yes.
Thank you.
Definitely, we're looking to continue that. And then also just, you know, we, now, we're still, you know, I think we'll have, you know, put Pat on the spot to, are we totally writing off that we can't convince the state to re-award the existing award that they just made to Springfield for this site, so that we might even move up that timeline?
So we, we've spoken to the state, and we are working with Congressman Neal's office to make that request still. So, so I, I'm, my fingers are still crossed.
Okay, great.
But we don't wanna miss an opportunity.
Update on that, too.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna keep moving all, all tracks will go forward that we presented tonight.
Yeah, great. Go ahead, Laura. I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say that, you know, Gordonville is owned by the city. So I think part of the issue on the previous application is that the land was not city-owned. So, and we were working, you know, to, to make some transfers there. So I, I don't think that we would run into the same kind of speed bumps that we've had in this past year. Cuz up in, you know, we were, we thought it was a go until we found out it wasn't, so.
Right, right.
Switched gears, and thankfully, we've been able to, you know, this grant did come a little sooner than it usually does. It doesn't always come out in the fall. Sometimes it comes out in the summer, so we'd be even further into like 2026. So I'm glad we've heard about it soon enough to kind of switch gears here.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much. And since, I'm sorry, go ahead, Pat.
I just wanted to share that the mayor was very upset when the Boys and Girls Club site had fallen through and, cuz commitments had been made. And he basically spearheaded and gave Laura and I the marching orders, figure out Gordonville. He wants to make this happen for the city. So he's into this 1,000% to make it work.
Great, great. And thank you for that, Pat. And I, I, I agree with the, the mayor. He, he's really behind this, so I'm excited about that, too. So since Betsy brought it up, I'm talking about Indian Orchard, I'm really excited to think, to think that we'll have more than one non-motorized wheels park, is what Yolanda calls it. So I'm thinking of, of the Richard Neal Park, right, in Indian Orchard, which is just sitting there. And I think would be a great place to have a bike and skate park.
I have an even better site for you. You wanna be here where I'm thinking for you?
Where?
I'd love to do this at the land next door to Kennedy Junior High School.
Oh, that's interesting.
Neal, Neal Park is, it's a, it's gonna be beautiful, but Neal is very, it's, I think, a little bit difficult access, if you will.
Very difficult access.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of wetlands.
Okay.
A lot of wetlands at Neal Park, where Laura and I have been working on plans for Kennedy. And we're finding information, Laura. I don't know if we've done the deed research, but it looks like that might be part land that we weren't aware of, but we're checking into that.
Okay, sounds great. I know that they are doing a lot of work on Page Boulevard to hopefully make Richard Neal Park more accessible. But then that brings me back to the parking lot and the sidewalks in this, in the Gordon Bill Park. And would, will you guys be able to use any of the infrastructure money that we're getting for that, maybe?
So we, what we'll do, we'll work with DPW. There's all kinds of state grants that are available. And like their Chapter 90 monies need to be spent on sidewalk type projects. So we will be meeting with them to see how that can be funded through those type of programs.
Great, great. Thank you so much. Do any of the councilors have any questions? Let me see, who else is here?
I'm good. I just think it's a, a great, great thing for the city, that the city's getting behind it. And I'm excited for what's to come. Gives the kids a different opportunity to, other than basketball, which I'm a basketball guy, but it gives the kids a different opportunity to do different things. So great, great job, great job, everybody.
Yes, thank you so much.
And I know Yolanda's been on this for a long time, so.
Very long time. She's, she's just about too old to use it now. That'll be good for the other kids.
Oh, no. What if, one thing I've learned in the research and development, there is no age limit in a, in a bike and skate park.
Oh, yeah, no, these folks at this hearing were all 35 to 50.
Gonna go over there and do some skating. Go ahead, let him make.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Not a question, just a comment. I appreciate the update and, and just so thankful to Yolanda and Betsy and the members of the Parks Department for all their work on this. I remember Yolanda sitting with you and Pat Sullivan in his office five years ago, when you had first come forward with youth in the community and had asked the chairwoman to call this meeting when we had received the initial information that the Boys and Girls Club had pulled out. But it's great that just in the very short time since that information became available and this meeting got scheduled, that this has been turned around so quickly. So I think it shows a great commitment from the administration in terms of the, them really putting, you know, the money where the mouth is, so to speak, on this project. And, you know, any support that the city council can continue to offer on the development of this site or future sites certainly will be there. I guess the only question I have is, did we, did we lose time in terms of beginning, in terms of the construction timeline in having to move sites, Pat?
Yeah, so what happens is, the state has been very kind in that they're not taking the grant away from us. But at the same point, the laws that they're operating under don't allow us to transfer it to a new site. And that's what Betsy, Yolanda and I were alluding to. We, I've spoken to Congressman Neal. He wants to write a, a letter, and we're helping his office prepare that letter. So hopefully that'll go out sometime next week. And then we have our fingers crossed that maybe the powers to be, can make a decision to redirect it to this location. But the agency that we'll work with said no, but they're not holding against us. It might, 37 years with the department, we've never had this happen where a, someone that was working with us a partner back out like this. So that was very disappointing, especially when they took a board vote last December, and they begged us basically to have us, have them included in the grant. So anyway, it's happened, and we're dealing with it. And just, you know, the mayor gave Laura and I 48 hours to figure out how to make Gordonville work. So that's how upset the mayor was. He wanted an answer immediately. And we get, we got him the answer, and we're, we're gonna move as fast as we can, though.
I mean, thank you.
But I want you to know Congressman Neal is equally upset, and he wants to try to help, but I can't, we, no one can make that commitment, so. But he's gonna try.
This is state money. I mean, this is a state, it's a state grant, but it's federal money. So that's why he has, he potentially has the clout to tell the state.
Yeah.
Give it to them, yeah.
The, the Land and Water Conservation Fund is funded through the National Park Service. So all of these grants that we apply for with this LWCF grant is, the state has to make sure it meets the, the state's goals for, for outdoor recreation, as well as the cities. But then, once they, and once they decide that it does, it moves to the federal level for review. That's why this has a little bit longer of a timeline, because it has to be reviewed at the federal level. And then it's, you know, there's other things that happen from there, so.
Right.
They're, they're highly competitive grants, and, and there are a lot, a lot of work goes into them. So that's why we were just so disappointed. But anyway, we're moving forward, and we're gonna make this happen in our city.
Yeah, and, and I.
Yolanda, I mean, to Betsy's point, Yolanda's point, we do, Laura and I are going to work with them to, to figure out the other locations, cuz we feel there should be four or five of these across the city. And that's what we want to use that CPA application for, to identify, start preliminary designs at those locations. And then as other grants come available, we're ready to take them off the shelf and just apply for them to get more built.
That's great, that's great. And I, I wanna add to what the councillor said about it, this being a great project, and your commitment, and the mayor's commitment, and Yolanda, and Walkbike. I think Walkbike Springfield's work that they've been doing for the last number of years. So I just commend everyone, and I'm so excited to hopefully see this happening. I know things happen slowly, in my estimation, but it's gonna happen. And I know the kids are gonna be really happy about it, the young people, and the not-so-young people even, because I'm sure that, you know, the neighbors out there are gonna be so happy to be able to even bring their children and grandchildren, or to just walk around there. So I'm, I'm really excited that this is happening, and I wanna thank you all again for continuing, you know, and being steadfast in this project. Excellent. What time is it? You guys, oh, it's only 5 o'clock. That's good. Great. Are there any other questions, any other comments from councilors or the constituents? And Pat, I wanted, this is an off-topic, I just wanted to thank you and the Parks Department for the wonderful work you guys are doing on the diamonds. I'm excited about that. Thank you so much for that. A lot of people are happy.
Yeah, so Forest Park Diamond Number One kind of finished up about yesterday. And we got the grant for Walker. And, and we were trying, you know, well, one, that group hadn't reached out to us directly, but we had an active grant application. And Laura and I are under a lot of strict orders by the state and the feds that we can't share that information till they make the decision, cuz they don't wanna get a ton of phone calls, putting pressure on them. So it's not like we were trying to keep that from anyone. It's just that, those are the guidelines that we're asked to follow, not to share that information till the decisions are made. And, and, and I can, I get it, they don't want, they want a fair process for, but again, very highly. But again, very highly competitive grants and I'm just proud of Laura, myself, Pete Koopsuck. Uh, we all work on these grants and we're just proud that we got them. So we got, we, we bring a lot of money back to the city through those grants. And I want to thank the counselors that are on uh, line tonight. Thank you for all your support. Uh, because they all require council approval at some point. You guys have been awesome to work with as well. So thank you for your continued support.
Thank you so much. Anytime you guys are doing anything for the city and benefiting the residents, I'm in support of that. So I appreciate it. And um, Pat, I, it's kind of like good because um, I know that um, I forgot, Field of Dreams, I guess, reached out to me. And when I reached out to it, it was a perfect timing. So they think I did it.
Well, well, you, well, in, in a way you did. So again, just by supporting us. Uh, you know, i- it's, it's amazing how one project leads to one other. And so when we're getting all this work done, and I think that's why the state likes giving us the grant money. They know we're going to do a good product.
Right.
Um, you know, a lot of communities turn in grants and they don't get the grant. So we, we've got a good track record.
Yeah, yeah.
And um, and that's why, and, and I'm thankful that they're not hold, you know, that's the worst thing to do, you know, think that we had a two million dollar grant, we, we had to technically turn it down. They're not going to hold that against us. That was our biggest fear with that. Cause I've never turned down a grant in my thirty-seven years, but.
Yeah, we don't like doing that.
And I don't want to, I don't want to forget to say that uh, we were just waiting on the, you know, once we get the site official. Um, Tony Hawk's Grant is available and we have the okay as long as we have the site. And the great thing about that is that, you know, they come with a whole lot of advertising and a whole lot of stuff. So to get Tony Hawk to come visit Springfield when it opens um, after they get, you know, when they give us the grant, is going to be something amazing to see.
Hmm, yeah, I'm excited about that. So start planning that, Yolanda. All right.
Thank you too.
Okay, yes. Yeah, thank you, Betsy and Yolanda. What, Walkbike Springfield is amazing. All right. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Parks Department.